Tom's not going to be here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. First thing on the agenda is review and discuss electronic document management system proposal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you want me to start? Okay. Brian is unable to be here today, so I was here for him. We've been having discussions around our electronic document managing system. So, in the last couple of years, just to give a little bit of a background, we were with ISC. Of course, pandemic is taking place. ISC didn't have a solution for us at the time to get us through the pandemic. He, Brian had looked at Northwoods. He had previously worked with them in Beltravia County. And that provided a solution during the pandemic, which is kind of why we went that direction at the time for the document management system. Currently, today, right now, ISC has upgraded their system within the last two years. And they do, they've developed a new situation that's easily adaptable for my staff to work with. And this is why we were looking at it. The initial and the ongoing costs are considerably cheaper with ISC. I know Dave, you had presented some questions yesterday. I was unable to get all of them answered. The one I do want to work on getting is the cancellation cost to Northwoods to present to you.
Excuse me, was that a three-year contract with Northwoods?
I believe, I don't have a copy of the signed contract. And I did review with Jonathan also because Brian and him had some conversation with the contract. Jonathan didn't have the signed one either, so that is something that I want to ask.
Okay.
Was it, was it a full three-year contract or did get that, did that get changed somehow? So, that is, I did reach out to Northwoods. I sent an email to the contact that Brian has, but I have not received that yet because it was late yesterday. So, I anticipated I wouldn't get it before 9:00 a.m. this morning. I know Brian did submit some items. And just to, and the reason I suggested today and potentially February is because there was a $20,000 difference for the initial startup fee if we went with ISC before the end of February. The yearly maintenance cost is a $50,000 difference from Northwoods to ISC. And looking at just the different things, he did put in, you know, some of the reimbursement rates that we do have. I did ask ISC to do a presentation, so I was able to see the upgrade. As far as I know, Dave had questioned, is ISC a new upgrade? What guarantees is that, that we wouldn't be doing this again? And I understand that piece of it because it is, it's disappointing that what we had thought we'd have, they don't have the continuing upgrades right now with Northwoods. And to do another phase, so Northwoods kind of broke things down into different phases. To get this next phase is, again, more money. So, it seems like everything we want is a cost through Northwoods.
So, what you've been using, I remember when we approved Northwoods?
Yep.
So, will that information be transferable and work with this? Or will you have to re-enter all that?
Correct. They would transfer it from the on-base solution to the, and it's Northwoods, through Northwoods to ISC. And we actually still have, we never let go of the ISC information that we had prior because I have actually had to go back and use it.
Okay.
So, we still do have the ISC two in the background still. So, it'd be approximately a year worth of documents because we really didn't, we started everything in 2020, but they didn't start transferring documents until early last year. So, it'd be approximately a year.
So, if there's a, if there's a Phase Three cost to Northwoods, more than likely, based on many contracts I've read, you're not going to be able to eliminate that if you...
I, I don't know because I don't have the contract.
So, that may be money we have to eat if we make the change. And then, number two, my concern with all this is, I wonder if we're properly vetting this stuff because this, this is the second time this has happened now that we think we're going to go with a software. This stuff is really expensive, folks, especially the acquisition fees to get started. We need to make sure that it's exactly what we want and will work with us. We can't be doing this every two or three years. It's expensive. And if that literally means having to go to another county and sit down and watch it in action and ask a lot of questions, we probably should be doing that rather than, rather than just taking people's words for it. Just because it works in one county doesn't mean it'll work the way you're doing things.
And I did, I did have the presentation. And I've talked to the local supervisors because Cass County does have it. Wadena has it, Todd has it. They all have ISC also. And it's working for them because of what I've taken is what my staff are, are dealing with and then seeing which one has a better solution to get through work efficiency.
And, and don't get me wrong, I see, you know, the annual cost goes down, so that, that's, that's a real positive. The only part I get frustrated with is that upfront cost that it's, it's like throwing money in a hole in a boat. It seems like you've got to actually stay with a particular software long enough to recapture that. If you're constantly changing it, you're just, that money seems like it's just kind of thrown away.
So, am I hearing you say to the rest of the board and...
Work your mic, Dan.
That because we don't have all the information with Northwoods on their total cost, that you would like them to look into it more and then make a decision on the next meeting, which would be the 15th, which would still allow time for the 28th? Is that what you're saying?
Well, right. And I submitted quite a few, few questions, you know, that I had upfront so that it, even, even with the discount that they're throwing out there at you, really? Have you had enough time to vet it?
Right.
And make sure it's correct? I mean, you did have it before, so I, I would guess it's very similar in many ways with just the upgrades. So, you would know more about ISC than you did about something new.
Right.
But, you know, like I say, this is, this is coming up on the second time this has happened with a piece of software we purchased. And, you know, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars here that we're investing into these things. And if we find out they're not working two or three years, not a very good investment.
Right. Would it be possible for me to get the answers potentially before next week's board meeting to get to you? I, I do want to know what the cancellation fee is. That, that's a big one that I would like to find out.
And then, another plus would be, you know, you had that initial acquisition cost for Northwoods. So, how long would it take us to recoup that with the annual savings here if we switch?
Okay.
But the biggest concern is, is making sure we make a good decision on the software and that it meets our needs so that we actually stay with it a while.
So, if I understand you correctly, because I don't remember when, I remember approving Northwoods. I just don't remember the specifics. We switched to them because ISC did not have the needed.
Correct. And now they've upgraded everything. It's all web-based. It's, there's just a lot more things we can do that they developed now.
Because if, so ISC, I don't think was accessible easily when people were working remotely.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And that, that's kind of why we went with the solution with Northwoods because being thrown into the pandemic like that, we had to get people to telecommute.
Yep.
And they didn't have the solution at the time. So, Northwoods was the better solution at the time.
So, did they, is that who came in and did the records retention also? Who was that with?
Yeah, I think that was part of Northwoods.
I think so.
You mean with just getting everything? Yes.
Yeah.
So, Northwoods did that. So, if you end up switching to ISC, all that's going to be transferred for this fee of $103,000? That includes transferring all those records?
I, we would ask Northwoods to that. ISC did that with no cost to switch, because we also took all of ISC documents.
Yeah.
And loaded it into the Northwoods.
Okay. So, then I would want to know if, what's it's going to cost to take all the Northwoods documents? Because...
For that one year?
Well, not only the one year. If you did all the records retention, you went paperless. That's now in Northwoods.
But we still have it?
I know, but I, but I would want it in the cloud so you guys wouldn't have to go back to the paper.
We have, like ISC has, we have everything in ISC through February of 2020, electronic.
Okay.
See, IMU and Child Support went a little bit earlier than Social Workers.
Okay.
We've been doing document managing for quite some time. So, it'd only be the past year to transfer from I, uh, Northwoods to ISC.
Okay.
We still have everything backed up.
Let me see if there's a cost for that also.
Yep, I can, I can find that information out.
Okay.
So, the original goal of becoming completely electronic and mobile won't change?
So, Michelle, you mentioned Cass County has ISC. What is IFC?
What was that?
What's IFC?
I, IS?
F, as in Frank C.
I don't know. ISC is the, is the document managing system we had prior. I'm not sure what IFC is.
Where are you seeing that?
I'm taking that from Cass County. That's the current program that they have, IFC.
For social workers or for...?
That's what I'm asking you, what is IFC? Because I don't know.
So, that could be, maybe they have a different system for it. I'm only looking at for Child Support, IMU, Accounting, Office Support. They use ISC.
Could be a typo.
Yeah, it could be typo. I'm, I'm not...
So, I'm a little confused. So, is, is your whole department using Northwoods, but ISC now would not be department-wide?
Correct. Traverse, so Traverse would still stay with the social workers.
And that's what they're currently using?
That's a separate.
They did, they did not switch to Northwoods?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Comparing apples to apples, right now, your group is with Northwoods? And that's all we're changing or potentially changing?
Correct. Just a portion of it, yep. Because Northwoods has Traverse and then they have OnBase. So, so when we say Northwoods, it's really OnBase and Compass because those are the two programs that all of IMU, Child Support, Office Support, Accounting use. And then, social workers use Traverse, a different iCloud system.
So, we wouldn't completely be eliminating Northwoods?
Correct.
Okay, this is getting more confusing.
Will there be an ongoing cost with Northwoods?
There still would for the social worker side.
Okay.
Yep. And I don't use that because that's a different program. They use a different program with SSIS on the social workers.
Looking at the numbers presented here, just doing the math in my head, it looks like it'd be about three years to recoup, except we don't know what the cancellation costs are going to be and if there's going to be any costs in transferring data from Northwoods to ISC.
Yep. And I know Shar had asked that, and I will ask that question if there's any charge. I know when ISC transferred, I believe there was no cost at that, that point when ISC offered to work with Northwoods to transfer those documents.
So, is this, this $71,645 with Northwoods? Is that for all of Northwood services or just this module?
That would be just with OnBase and Compass.
Okay.
Yep. Because...
Traverse is not included in that $71,000s?
Correct. Yep. And that's where, like, when you look at to that other with the ISC, this is, and you can see like on the bottom of page five, how it says for Child Support Income Maintenance. That's why they, they state that. Because it's not the social worker documents. It's Child Support Income Maintenance.
So, how can they be competitive when they're, you know, so much cost difference? Why, have you gone to Northwoods and said, you know what? If we stay with you, will you lower annual fee?
I don't know if Brian's, talked to Brad about, about that. I know one big issue we've been having is, I know he had put in here, DHS had changed some programs, which now requires an upgrade. And what that is about is the SMI, so the data that gets into the system. Northwoods wants now another payment for them to update that for us, which ISC already has that solution.
So, Northwoods charges per update where ISC...
Yeah, they have all these phases.
So, do you have in writing ISC won't charge per phase?
Yeah, that's what, that, this is what he had sent that's attached.
Yeah, but it's not an ongoing. It's just currently they're up to date.
Correct. Like, the, like I said, with the, the yearly fee, it'd be the 20, almost 21.
Yep.
Yep, with ISC.
So, I don't mean to be picky here, but I would think somebody would have known that ISC was going to upgrade prior to us making the decision on the other thing. I mean, it's just, sometimes it's just a matter of time, you know?
Right.
Instead of jumping off one ship onto another ship and then realizing, oh, let's go back to the other ship again. I mean...
But in March of 2020, people had to make decisions that right now.
It was, and the other part of it, if we did switch back to ISC, it's going to reduce some costs to the other county departments as well because it's based on the number of licensures. So, when we add that many more licensures, it's, I know, I believe the auditor potentially, county attorney's office, there's other departments that already use ISC as well.
I can say that my, my department utilizes best department on a regular basis. So, anything that helps her staff do her, their job easier helps my staff. And, and that's true for all departments. So, it sounds like, without getting too far in the weeds here, that it, that there's other reasons other than just costs why ISC is better at, at the moment. I'd love to speak to that. But it makes that job easier for them and it helps me in my office. And it also helps the court and helping a better system.
Right.
At the end of it. So, I don't, I don't know what the benefits over Northwoods are other than cost.
But to Dan's point, you know, and then I'll quit belaboring the issue. But to Dan's point, he kind of make, if Northwoods is going to be competitive, or whoever made that point, or their, Shar. Are they going to change something and a year later? Oh, they're better. That's what I mean. At some point, at some point in time, we have to make a decision who we're going to go with and actually stay there a while. So, you really have to vet it good.
You know, prior, we liked ISC. We did. It was just at the time pandemic happened, we needed to telecommute. They didn't have the solution at the time. And that's kind of what pushed us towards Northwoods is because they had a solution. And then, of course, now there's been an upgrade to ISC, which offers a better solution for us right now. And, and I, and I understand that.
Yeah. And I do, I, I understand that too. I just want to make sure that...
We're making the right decision.
This is right this time for all the right reasons.
Correct. I agree. And I do want to find out regarding that cancellation cost to what? And then, like you said, as far as how long to recoup the cost? And then, if there's a cost, any, but I just want to make sure I have all the questions so that I can be prepared for that for next...
The cancellation one's big because, I mean, if that turns out to be quite a bit more expensive than the savings,
We weighed out the contract.
Then you wait, then you wait out the contract.
Right. I understand that. So, are those the biggest questions as far as, like, with cancellation? Is there any cost to transfer the records to ISC?
And will they lower their annual fee?
Because I can work with Northwoods this weekend.
Yeah, but if it's not the interface they like.
I know, but I'm, I'm just...
But it's part of the, part of the decision, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Because they're not aware, you know, that we're looking at.
And it was helpful to hear that someone else uses it besides social services.
Right.
And to summarize, we went to Northwoods, in a sense, because of the pandemic we had to.
Yeah.
So, I like to think that we made decisions at the time that we felt with the information we have was the correct decision.
Right.
Now, you're saying that ISC has a, a better product?
A better solution.
Okay, better solution at a lower price?
Correct.
Yeah, so I understand why we would want to switch now at this point too. But, so yeah, if you can answer those questions for us and hopefully have it before next week's meeting, since the 28th could save us $20,000 if we could get this taken care of.
Yep. And if I do find that earlier, do I just submit it to Jeff and then he'll get it? Okay. Okay. And if there's any other questions, please feel free to email that and he'll get it to me.
Yeah, so please try and get those answered before the next meeting. Otherwise, we won't be able to make a sound decision.
Okay. I can do that.
Anything else?
Thanks. We weren't yelling at you.
I, I was like, Brian, do I do this?
Thanks, Brian.
Right. I'm like, he owes me now.
Thank you for being a messenger, yeah.
Thank you.
All righty. Next on the agenda is ARPA.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, since we have Attorney Frieden here today, can we skip down to item number 14? We had a phone call yesterday with, with Zachary Cronin related to the convoluted ownership and records. It's a really convoluted situation is what it, is what it is. I was hoping that we were going to have a resolution and I was going to be able to talk, tell you a clear path forward related to our ownership and authority to, to sell or not sell or dispose of, of the heritage property. But those parcels each have unique challenges that have been built up over time that we have to unwind before we're going to be able to move forward. Jonathan, can you give a, can you give a brief summary from your perspective of, of the, of the issues we need to overcome before we move forward?
Yes, I can. Thanks. And, and I appreciate that I'm here while we're doing this one instead of later today. So, the conversation as Jeff brought up, first of all, I just note that our counsel, Zach, is doing a great job. And his, his first question is, who owns the actual property? And unfortunately, that question hasn't been answered to his satisfaction, which is because he's a good attorney and trying to figure out exactly what of the three different parcels, and, and to speak to those parcels, we have the nursing home itself, the memory care, I believe, is the other one, and then Park Villa Apartments, right? And those are three separate parcels on the GIS map. The, the issue, Park Villa is in a little bit different situation, which we can talk about on a different day. But the other two parcels are subject to a lease. And that lease came about, my understanding and the conversations that we've been having is that lease came about in 2014 with bonding. And that lease is with the, and I'm, I'm going to try to get this correctly, Heritage Living Center LLC.
Or even Heritage Living LLC. The problem is, I think, I think we've been relatively loose with our terminology and, and it's creating confusion.
It needs to be more specific.
And it needs to be more specific.
But it's the LLC of Heritage.
I like that. Hello, what is your name?
That entity became created based off of a, a need for the bonding that had to happen. Exactly how it was created and from what entity gave the authority? I don't know if anybody was on the board at that point. What, I, I don't know the answer to that question. And that's one of the things we have to look into.
I think it was created, I think it was created out of the need for the new market tax credits. And I think it actually is done now and disappears.
And that was one of the things that Jeff brought up, that he did believe that documentation, I think Jeff sent yesterday, and I just haven't read it yet. But maybe it was this morning, one or the other, late yesterday or this morning. And that might solve that issue on, on whether or not this lease is still hanging out there and something that needs to be taken care of before full ownership can be even considered to be conveyed, whether or not that's something down the road or not. Then there are some additional steps, of course, that need to happen.
I would certainly have the attorney reach out to Kurt and then the, uh, over in Detroit Lakes, the guys that did the new market tax credit. They should be able to answer that lickety-split.
I think that's already been done by Jeff, actually.
Yeah, I reached out to Shad. He was out of the office yesterday. And, and we're going to have a phone call at 2:00 this afternoon based on the email that just popped in. If you look at this, at this map and you look at this parcel here, the, the eastern third of this, I don't know if this, is this the memory care center over here on the eastern?
Oh, yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, it's, the rest of the parcel is subject to a ground lease that was created relative to the new market tax credits and I believe has an expiry of in 2074. The, the parcel down here actually shows, if you look at, if you look at the property details on that, it actually shows, it shows that it's owned by Hubbard County Senior Housing, but it isn't. It's owned by, it's owned by the, the county. Whereas if you look at...
Question though, because that's tied into HUD.
That part isn't, this part is. Park Villa is the one that's tied into HUD.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Now, that one is act...
That's what I meant.
That one, that one was actually transferred to Hubbard County Senior Housing back in 2001, if I'm not mistaken. And then, essentially, that's the one that's owned by occupants. As Jonathan said, that's not what we're talking about now.
Right, right.
We're just trying to figure out why the records on the second parcel don't seem to match the title, title work and deed work. And we're also trying to deal with the authority relative to this ground lease and the ability to, to cancel that, modify that.
And whether it still exists.
And whether, and whether it still exists. So, that hopefully my conversation with Chad, Shad and Tim this afternoon shed some light on that. If I can get a narrative that works and, and get that information to Zach, that will help a lot. But, but essentially, we still have to determine the authority to sell before we can identify the process by which we can sell.
And this, and I would love to say that this is uncommon when looking at selling or... This, and I would love to say that this is uncommon when looking at selling or even remotely considering selling property, but it's not. Um, this comes up all the time. This is just a more complicated situation based off of a number of different factors. But title work is, is the first step. I mean, that's the foundation of what we're doing, which again is why I'm really glad that we have, uh, Zach who was helping us, um, to, to get that all ironed out before we take the next step and then possibly additional steps down the road. So that, that's my understanding where we're at. I appreciate Jeff's hard work on it as well.
So basically we have a lease, but we don't have any idea who the lease is with?
We do know who the lease is with. It's between the LLC from Heritage, um, and
And, and what we can really can't, what we can't find the clear documentation of is, is the Heritage Living Center Board the governing body of the LLC?
How did that get created?
I believe that that's true, but we haven't found the documentation that, that brings us to that, to that point.
It wasn't recorded. Just the, just the lease was recorded. So we need to go back and figure out. And I think, uh, Mr. Hanson is the right person to provide that documentation at this point, but we'll see. We'll see where it's at.
Well, he told me it was a garage full of boxes.
I'm sure he has the document somewhere.
He has a three-ring binder. I would think that
I have, I have, I have chat, spoken with Brett from Ekumen, who is the organized person of that group and has Kurt's three-ring binder. And we've gotten all the material from him. Truth be told, the records are not good. Um, they may have what they have, but as, as Jonathan said, just the fact that, that the definition of the LLC not being recorded anywhere is, is, is problematic because I think from an operational standpoint, related to the unwinding, Richard Devine signed for the LLC in, in December, on December 31st, right? Who is he signing as?
Oh, yeah, cause he could have been a commissioner or he could have been a
Right. So, uh, no, but when he deci- when he signed in December of this past year, who was he, who was he signing as?
Oh, this past year, okay.
When we wound down the new market tax credit, so I think I signed a document that did eliminate the LLC.
And, and that's exactly the documentation we have. We think that there may be a, a situation where those documents were recorded on or about January 10th and that they pulled the title work on or about January 10th. So there's a situation where we may not have everything we need. We may just have to ask them, uh, Zach to do that again. Just update it. But I want to make sure that before we do that and encumber that cost, that we identify that this, what we're looking for is in there. And that we're going to, we're going to get the documentation we need. So I think very generally, very generally, I think we first have to identify the ownership and the, and the legal capacity to, to, to sell or offer to sell. And then we would have to identify the path forward related to selling and/or working with a broker. So I think those are the two things
I didn't find out.
very basically that we're working to, to identify. Uh, and if I can this afternoon, I'll try to loop Zach in on this conversation with Shad and Tim because then we would be able to close the loop quicker.
Well, it's really great that we moved this conversation up before we talked about ARPA funds.
Can you work?
This is, this might be another delay as far as time for listing.
Can you work the, uh, regarding the brokerage agreement, the other issue we discussed, can you work the two things concurrently together?
No.
Nope.
That, that's not the impression I got from, from Zach yesterday is, is that we
I mean, that would save time if you could.
Yep, it would. Uh, and I don't have any confidence that that's the right thing to do right now.
Yeah, Zach, Zach was pretty, pretty straightforward about this is the first thing and the only thing that really matters at the moment. Sorry, I keep not answering a question that you asked.
No, that's right. I was just going to maybe provide some information. So downstairs, um, all of that information that we have down there, uh, was supposed to be scanned in, you know, there is maybe some information that you need.
From which office? Cause there's obviously multiple areas downstairs.
Well, through the county coordinator.
Okay.
Past county coordinators.
Sure, sure.
That information may be down there as far as your ownership that didn't get processed. That may be the area that it's lost and
It's not down there. It is not down there.
You looked down there?
I've looked down there.
And, and I don't think they would have had the Heritage Living Center Board meetings down there.
No, they would have information maybe on ownership down there from the onset.
From the very beginning, which we know how that all worked because that was recorded. The real issue that Zach is working through is this lease agreement with the LLC in 2014. Even when we go back to oh seven with the, with the board, um, the Heritage Board and their new bylaws, that's really not even at issue. I mean, we'll get to the Park Villa issue, um, down the road because that's, that's just a different, uh, deal, but I know it's the 2014 lease agreement. Otherwise, I, I know in talking to Zach, he feels pretty comfortable that if that lease agreement is figured out as far as how that works out, if it still exists or not, um, the, the, the county owns those two parcels at the end of the day. It's just whether it's subject to that lease is all.
Well, if that lease is still in force in a sense, can't we just end it, cancel it, whatever?
Not until 2044, I think is what that lease was. It was a long, long time. Uh, but it was based off of new market tax credits is my understanding, um, and when and if that was going to be ceased. Um, it does sound, obviously that was done here recently and so I think it's just updating the records and then that lease, um, either is still in existence or not, um, that's something that I'm glad Zach is looking through. And once he gets the documentation, he'll, he'll be able to answer that question for you.
Yeah, I think I'll find out today because based on my last conversation with Kurt, that, that disappeared and it reverted back to the county.
And it really, the lease agreement, the, the issue with it is not so much whether or not the county still owns the land because it, it's just the county having a lease with the LLC and then paying the LLC. I think it was like 77,000 a year or something along those lines. Um, and then it being reimbursed through Heritage itself. And whether or not that lease doesn't allow the county to sell. And that's what the lease says is the county cannot sell. And that, that's the issue. So the lease either needs to be negotiated out of existence or not exist, one or the other. And, and you can correct me if you think I'm wrong on that, Jeff, but that was what I got from Zach yesterday.
No, I, there is one element related, there's a lease and a ground lease and I forget which one had the shorter term versus the longer term. But one of them simply did say that it, it, the county could not sell during that period of time. So that has to be resolved before anything else moves forward.
Shad will have the answer.
Yeah.
And, and the biggest, the biggest thing that I don't, I can't seem to find documentation of is what is the definition and how did Heritage LLC get created and?
It had to be a nonprofit.
It is a nonprofit.
Yes, it is.
For the tax credit to be worked.
Really, it's whether the county created it or the Heritage Board itself created it. Or if, I mean, or if some other entity created it, but I, I believe it was likely Heritage Board that created it. I don't know. Were you on the board in 14?
Dan was, I was not.
And I, I just don't know the answer to that. Um, obviously I was not the county attorney in 14, but
So Dick Devine was on both boards at that time. I wonder if he would have any recollection.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work it through with Shad and, and then track it back. Um, but, but that's, I, I just, my update today, I was hoping I was going to talk to you about a clear path forward, uh, being able to sign the brokerage agreement in the near term. And then yesterday we got more questions than answers, which means we really have to do that. But the most important thing to know is, is that Jonathan and I are both engaged in making sure this happens and, and it's a priority for, uh, for Zach. So as, as we're feeding him information, he is helping us work through it.
And Dick, you know what? Matt Doda was commissioner then. 2014, it wasn't Dick.
He was, that's correct, yeah. And, and I, I agree with Jeff, this, obviously we wish this, it was going faster, but at the end of the day, this is just the, the, the process.
We have to have a
It, it has to be done. So, um, it's taking longer than anyone would like at this point. We'd like to move forward faster, but we're working on it.
It, it's, truthfully, if you, if you, if you thought about it and you knew this and you could anticipate this, it would have been better to have done this before we move forward with the appraisal process.
Agreed. And, yeah, this should have been done. I mean, and, and really regardless of what happens in the future, this needs to be done anyway. At the end of the day, it just has to be done, so.
Hopefully we get it done soon enough that we don't have to go through the, the first two steps again.
Yeah.
I kind of figured it'd be
Is that the number you called?
Other questions about that? We'll provide updates as we have them. Uh, I have been having conversations with our contact at the brokerage firm, just letting him know where we're at, what we're dealing with. And, and he's not surprised and being relatively patient with the process too, so.
Well, thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah, right? Everything's confusing at this time.
How about, did you try texting?
No, thanks. Have a great day.
You know who else? If you reach out to Jack Brown, the realtor, he's got this updated.
Okay, so now we'll go back to one, two, the A R P A applications.
I thought you guys might need some help, so I
Do you know, uh, do you have Jack on text? Otherwise I'll text it to you.
You can send, yeah, send it to me.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, the A R P A committee met on January 25th and we reviewed the applications that we received to that point. And we had a really good conversation about the allocation of the balance of the $3 million of A R P funds from the county. Uh, the first and most probably most important thing to mention is, is that the final rule relative to eligibility guidelines for, uh, S L F R F funds is that basically the first $10 million is callable as, uh, revenue reimbursement. And from the standpoint of record keeping and from the standpoint of making sure that we stay in good stead with that, uh, that $4 million amount that we, we got from the federal government, it's our recommendation that we would, um, that we would record that, that, that dollar, those dollars as revenue recapture because then they're Hubbard County funds to be used for general government expenditures, which means anything else, right? Anything meaning leave it in the account, use it later, leave it in the account and spend it the way, and allocate it the way we were originally intending to allocate it. But the documentation and, uh, and the note taking and the audit purpose, uh, we would identify all of that as revenue recapture just because the new rule allows us to do that.
So can we easily, uh, collect a second half then?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I think the second half is, is automatic at, at the one-year anniversary of the, of the first half. So, and I'm going to skip ahead to a page here and this, I, I would, I would blow this up and I guess I will anyway. To show you that we had three internal, um, applications, we had applications from the city of Akeley, Nevis. And we had, uh, an ongoing request from Heritage Living Center. And then we had, uh, it, Akeley, Nevis and Park Rapids all, all submitted infrastructure proposals. I'm going to just kind of s- stream over here to show you that we had a total of seven and a half million dollars worth of requests. We had a, we had a total of 3.174 million dollars left to allocate. We split some things into what we would fund through S L F R F and kind of some of those things we funded in whole, some of those things we funded, recommended funding in, in part. Some of them we split from this fund to, uh, the, the last column over here is other non-funded. Is kind of dependent on the capacity of the county board to capture some Enbridge money and use it to create a revolving loan fund that would be useful for some of the projects that are listed here. And I use the title of other, meaning that possible future revolving loan fund and the slash non-funded, meaning things that we might decide that we're not going to fund at all. But when we first limited down to, and, and we were all relatively happy that we, we split some money, we spread it around the county, we hit mental health issues, we hit infrastructure issues, we hit economic development issues. And we allocated that money across the county and basically in total, funding, um, showing funding for two internal projects and eliminating one of the internal projects completely. And then later that afternoon, we had a conversation at the, um, at the Heritage Living Center Board and understood that there was a continuing significant operational deficit that is either our problem, um, related to these funds or our problem related to, um, levy dollars and fund balance. So the, the conversation that afternoon was, and the direction after sending, sharing this, uh, this email was really needing to put on hold the allocation of that $3 million until we understood the, the total, the total impact of the revenue loss or the operational deficit at Heritage Living Center. So this was shared with, with everybody who made an application. Um, they all received a copy of that. I talked to several people. I haven't heard from anybody since that, that I didn't talk to specifically. But that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at, at this point in time. My, my original intention in conversation with this group is that we'd have a conversation. We'd review this information as a board today and then we'd probably make allocations on the 15th of February. And now this is simply saying that allocation, if any, is going to come later.
So if Heritage continues to lose money at the current rate?
Of about $140,000 a month.
Yeah, I was going to say. I personally think we have to place everything on hold until we see what happens with Heritage.
Right.
I had a conversation with Kurt this last week. One of the things that they're looking at is trying to figure out how they can possibly move some of the residents that qualify to live alone that are in the nursing home, to put them over into the apartments. Is that right? The cottage?
Into the manor.
Yeah, into the manor. I get all those confused.
Assisted living.
Assisted living. So then that would free up beds to do the short-term care because short-term care would bring in some more dollars. Kurt said there to the point that there is nobody out there to increase staff because no one's applying. And so if they actually get someone to apply, it's like a revolving door. If someone comes in, someone else leaves. And so he doesn't see that there will be an increase in the nursing home residents.
And that monthly loss, I believe, was just Heritage, correct? It did not include the manor?
I would have to study that. Kay, do you have any?
Total monthly loss for three months was 564,000.
Yeah, so
That was cumulative.
Yep. So we're at 2.3 million then for the year.
And I think everybody understands that, and we've, we've talked about it, but I want to mention it here relative to the, the improvements in the facility and the, and the occupancy and the fact that the place was cash flowing or very near to it prior to the pandemic.
Right.
We understand that this is, this is a reaction to and a result of pandemic and other conditions that have, have trickled down from that. And fortunately, the $4 million S L R F R F money has been designated to cover things like that. Unfortunately, it means that it, it might not go further than that.
I don't know what choice we have.
Dave, Ted and I were all on the M R C meeting yesterday and, you know, other counties that don't have county-owned nursing homes, but they have nursing homes. Everyone's facing the same problem. And nobody sees any solution that's coming forth legislatively. So this is all on us.
Yeah, the, the dozens of county-owned nursing homes have dwindled down to six-ish?
Yeah, but, but even the nursing homes that are not county-owned are coming to the county. Do you remember which county it was yesterday? That, uh, the nursing home came, it was privately owned and they, and they gave money.
Menomans is publicly owned.
Was it Menomans?
It, it could be, but Menomans is publicly owned.
They're the ones that, uh, presented, they're the ones that brought the issue up again.
Okay, so they are, they were county-owned?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I know Otter Tail had five come before the board, not asking for money, but asking for legislative solution. And that's where that increase, uh, base pay came. That was their proposing for 2025, but it's too late for starters and it
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, we were talking about this a year ago when some of the proposed mandates were coming out and the potential effects it would have. I think some of the other counties that don't have a county-owned nursing home just weren't maybe putting two and two together on where this could end up. Well, now it's affecting their privately-owned assisted living and long-term care facilities in their county. And they must be getting some feedback from them about the troubles they're facing. Now they're worried about the loss of employment and the loss of those facilities from their tax base. And so it's becoming real now and the numbers are real. I mean, we're, we're experiencing it. And it's, it's not a good scene and I don't know how you fix that because we've talked about this numerous times in many different committees. It's, it's more of a staffing issue than it is a pay issue. But people that have left these healthcare, law enforcement, even education, most of them probably are not coming back to that industry. Some you might be able to entice back, but all they're doing is going from company A to company B. You're not solving the overall staffing shortage. So how that gets solved, there's no solution in the short term. That's why Shar and I and the rest of us when we're up at A M C tried to, tried to advance the regulation standpoint where we could change those ratios of residents to staff. Cause I don't know, because you got to do more with less. And if you can't do more with less, you're, you're in trouble.
And some of the other counties expressed And some of the other counties expressed, I expressed, I had read, you know, reached out to Global Char and, and Smith and got nowhere, and some of the other counties said the same thing.
Yeah.
They're not even responding to phone calls, emails.
Even in a perfect world, if, you know, thank gosh, we got the ARP funds instead of levy dollars, but even if you expend that, have you solved the systemic problem that's lying there? Probably not in a year. You know, unless, unless you get some real novel ideas and different approaches coming down from the higher-ups.
So I think as a, as a matter of if, if generally the board understands we need to determine the scope of the problem before we can move forward with the allocation of those funds, I think that it would probably be coming from the representatives on the Living Center Board who would work with, with Kurt and the operations staff to try to determine what the amount is and bring forward allocations as, as needed or as appropriate or other solutions to the board after that. And then, once that stabilizes, take a look and see what's left. I don't, I don't, I don't know that I see another option. The other option is, is using, you know, other county dollars to pay those gaps because when those, when those bills are paid, they're backed by county dollars.
One, one idea that came out of MRC the other day that, you know, I would be willing to allocate some of the money is in Alexandria, they partnered with the VOTEC to create nursing and CNA courses, and anybody who entered the program and graduated would have a hundred percent of their tuition paid, and they were using an ARPA, ARP grant for that, but they had to work at a facility in Douglas County for a year. So I don't know if we'd do something like that.
Because Mary Thompson is working at the school in this, in Nevis and Park Rapids, I believe, don't quote me, but I think this is already in works, is offering CNA courses to anyone interested through the schools.
So that is, you know, one way if we, I would be supportive of expending some of, because at least we're addressing the root problem there then?
Yeah.
With some of it, and it wouldn't be a ton of money anyhow?
I have another option, I guess. Heritage had applied for a million dollars in this funding. If we were to set aside that money and then reallocate, relook at the, the asks and, and still be able to allocate some of these funds without being held hostage by Heritage. Because if we had no ARP funding, we would be taking from reserves or the general fund. And instead, we're holding up progress.
If you do the math on that, based on the current circumstances, you're, you're looking at another two point four million over the next year. So you've already expended a million, so that's three point four of the money right there. There's not a lot left. But, and again, that would only take you out with the current problem if it stays the same for a year.
And the, and the timeframe relative to our conversation prior to this one is how long, is there the possibility that this operational deficit is not the county's responsibility? And if that's true, what's the extent of that? So I, I think that that's, that's a completely fair statement, but I think it's worth waiting a month or two to deter, to know if we have the possibility of an end of term of our financial obligation to that or, or not. But I, but I think if there's still the, the intention to offer for sale, if we can meet the conditions of making sure we have the facilities operating and staff and everything capacity in the community, and, and we can work through the other issues, then we will have a, a time-bound constraint on that. And I, I think it would be less than twelve months, which means we could narrow that dollar amount, which I, I don't disagree, that's what that is, and we could still honor this to some degree with some level of certainty without, without not identifying how much of other public funds are we going to need to solve that problem between now and then. If we, if we anticipate that that's a six-month process from the time we can sign an agreement and say go, which is what I think we anticipate based on what the, the broker had, had, had shared with us, it's just a matter of when does that six-month period start? And honestly, I, I think, I think we are at this point forty-five to seventy-five days away from that starting point. Once we have the, the documentation, then we have about a three or four-week process of resolving the, the manner of sale. The ability to sell is going to be thirty, forty-five days, and then we've got another thirty days of, of, of walking through the process of, of making it available for sale before we could probably sign a brokerage agreement.
So it probably would be prudent to set it aside for a couple of months, revisit it, have a little more clarity, and then definitely probably maybe six months from now we'll know.
I, I would think three or four months from now, we would have a really clear idea of is there a, is there a finite period to the operational deficit that the county's responsible for?
Ted, I, I really would like to give funds.
Yeah, same here.
I, I totally support that, but what I don't want to do is to give out funds and then we end up either taking out of our reserve or else having to levy to cover the expenses of Heritage.
I don't think we'll have to do the levy.
For problems directly created by the pandemic.
Depends on how long we own it.
The other issue related to, as we were talking about, the creation of a county revolving loan fund, that's a conversation that'll come up second quarter of this year as we, as we enter into budgeting season, and that is not dependent on this and does provide an opportunity for the county to address economic development concerns within the county and create capacity for that going forward, so.
And couldn't we do some of that in grants? It wouldn't have to just be loans. So if we couldn't use money this way, we could still allocate money to actually give without a loan.
Yeah, yeah, a revolving loan fund is, is set up the way that you want it to set up, and it is always a combination of, of grants or loans. You know, oftentimes, oftentimes they're, they're loans that are forgiven after, you know, repayment of, of some amount or during the course in the successful completion of the project, et cetera.
Maybe waiting Mr. Chair for thirty or forty-five days until the initial process gets going, then I would not be opposed to what you're saying, but I think we should give him.
One question, one question I'd like to ask, and I don't think I'm the only one in Hubbard County that has this question, is closing Heritage an option? And I'm thinking that if we close it, it would save us dollars.
Well, currently, just in the nursing, the nursing home itself, there's thirty-one residents, and so you would be affecting the lives of thirty-one residents. I'm not sure how many employees there are. To me, that, I think that decision is premature. I think it needs to be up and working if we're going to market it as sellable. And if we don't sell it, that's a conversation for a later date, but I, I don't think we should go down that road now. Because my, my personal goal is to keep it open and functioning. We're, we're seeing people being shipped many hours away from home in other places.
We're also looking at if this is going to be an ongoing issue, not only this year, but in years in the future, well, then we could be asking our, our taxpayers to spend a couple million dollars a year to keep it open.
I agree with that, I just think the conversation's premature. Not that we shouldn't address it if we can't sell it.
I, I think it had to be said.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there's, there's value in it to the residents, there's value in it to the community. Not that that conversation might not happen in the future, hopefully not, but I would, I would wait on that, too.
All righty. Is there anything more on the ARPA funds?
I don't, I don't have any good news. I think you've identified all the challenging questions that are facing us.
All righty. Then we'll be at one point three, the county logo artwork.
Can we go?
Mr. Chair, should we, should we skip so forward since we have our presenters in group here relative to one point five, then we can take our time on, on one point three?
Sure. Okay. Crystal and Marcel, we'll talk about the Mississippi River Headwaters One Watershed One Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for the invite.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
It's a beautiful day to be out, going places, so.
I guess I kind of brought this forward, the Mississippi River Headwaters Watershed One Watershed One Plan project is pretty much done with the planning stage, and we're moving into the implementation stage. We would like to get these documents signed before the end of February so that Bowser can start allocating money in March or April?
That's correct.
Correct.
So we've got in our packets were the implementation memorandum agreement, but I don't see Jonathan here anymore. He did, I did talk to Jonathan yesterday morning, and he said that he did look through it, there was no red flags, he said it's your basic memorandum, memorandum of agreement. Then we've also got the resolution, a draft resolution for us, and then the work plan budget. And I guess if you guys want to kind of take over from there.
Sure. So the ask today, I know you're not voting today, that'll happen next week, and I would like you guys to know that I have a, a conference that I am doing all day on the fifteenth. So if you do need someone to come that day, I'll have Marcel come, and Zach would also be available. But, so the ask would be that on the fifteenth, that these things do get approved, and that would be the resolution, the work plan, and the memorandum of agreement. And what signing these does is open up the door for us to receive funds through the One Watershed One Plan for the Mississippi Headwaters area in the northern part of the county.
Bowser will not issue the, the agreement to proceed forward with the implementation until all three of these are approved by the boards.
That'd be all five counties.
That is correct.
Correct, yes. And the work plan, if you guys have questions about it, please ask. This is, you know, their best way of prioritizing and looking at what the goals are for the first two years of the total ten years. Just so that you're aware, the categories where the money have, money has been allocated, that money has been set aside in the work plan for, say, ag, BMPs, or forestry or stormwater. It can be shifted to different projects within that category without too much trouble, but it, like agriculture funds can't be shifted to forestry without going to the policy committee to discuss that. And one of the best things that we could do together as WCD, county, and, you know, community members is to notice where there are potential projects and let someone know about it, let us know about it, let you guys know about it, because the projects that get funded will be the ones that are brought forward, because each two-year funding period has a timeline, and if the funds are not spent at the end of that timeline, then that, those funds go back. So the way I expect this to go is the first year, year and a half, they will really, really focus on the things that were priority, but then in each two-year period, as you get toward the end of it, they will want to look at all of the eligible projects coming forward from each area, even if they are not in one of the priority watersheds. So, you know, keeping track of what we want to do, what our community wants to do is really important, and signing these for this watershed and the other watersheds as they come is the step we need to take to make those funds available. It doesn't force us to do any projects, but it makes them available for the projects that we want to do.
Were there any questions on the three documents as you reviewed them?
One question I would have on the procedures for parties to leave membership of the agreement, I see this agreement has a hundred and eighty days listed, where Leach, Leach Lake has thirty days. Is there a reason for that?
I think it's just the difference in the group putting together the documents. The Leach is a smaller group, it's just a couple of counties that might have weighed into it. Did you guys discuss it at length at any particular?
Not at any great length, but it was thought through, and each watershed team can decide the terms of those documents, and it was determined in six months would be a good term period for this. And the other thing to point out, that there was a, funds put in place to put the plans together of about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and we've been very diligent in how we've been spending the money, and I think when the funding is done, and when the events are done for the planning, we'll have about eighty-five thousand left to spend toward projects, which is goodness. That shows that we're good stewardship of the funds.
Yeah, I know that there, we relied less on consultants and outside people. I think with Crystal and Zach and the other soil and water conservation district employees, I think we had a wealth of knowledge to, to draw from, and I think that was a, a good thing for, for the watershed plan there. Like you say, instead of all that money being spent, eighty-five, a third of it, or a little bit more than a third of it still left over, I think, I think we did a good job there.
Right.
So this is just a general question, I guess, for all the watershed plans. This came up yesterday at Minnesota Rural Counties Association, and they were talking about ditching and the regulations there. But I know in the other plans and in this one, one of the goals is to obtain a lot of easements of private land. So my question is, within those easements, does the owner then retain the right to do anything to the land? Do they sign that away? Does the owner still pay the taxes on the land? And then any improvements, is that the owner's responsibility or is that the plan's responsibility?
So the conservation easements are a goal within the plan, but they're not paid for from the One Watershed One Plan funds. The current easement funds we're using for the Leach and Pine Watersheds come from Lassard Sams, and so that's tracked separately. The landowners, they have to apply, and the process takes anywhere from nine months to two years to get the whole thing through. But basically what they're doing, if they're accepted into an easement program, is they're selling some of their landowner rights, which are the rights to do different kinds of development, such as building houses on it or splitting it up. So if a parcel goes into an easement, a conservation easement, then it, those rights to develop the land are held into the future by the state, as long as the state of Minnesota exists, the state of Minnesota holds those rights, but the landowner continues to own the land, they can use it for recreational uses. They just can't develop it, and they do continue to pay the taxes. And across the state where they've been doing these easements, I believe for thirty or so years, they've had this kind of easement being used in the state. The taxes stay the same on those parcels. The only exception that I'm aware of is where Blanden has asked for the large easement area that they have to have their tax value reconsidered. I don't think there's been a decision made on that, but in the other cases, people continue to pay the same amount of tax that they did before the easement. What the landowner gets out of going into the easement is usually a fifty to sixty percent one-time payment of the total land value, raw land value, no improvements, that has been recorded in the latest assessment. So if, if your land value's a hundred thousand, your payment might be fifty thousand to sixty thousand, depending on which one of the programs you go into. And a lot of people use that to set up a trust for their kids to continue to hold the land. It really does help people keep that land in the hands of the family, and a lot of times, the people who want to be in an easement, they've held that for three generations, and they don't know how their kids will ever be able to keep it because their kids aren't in this time period doing as well as they had done. And so getting an easement really gives them peace of mind that they get to, you know, keep that legacy in their family and have it available to their kids and grandkids, which is great. We get the water quality benefits of keeping it forested, and they still pay taxes.
Thank you.
Crystal, aren't some of these short-term, more short-term easements?
So easements are usually permanent, especially
Crystal, aren't some of these short-term, more short-term easements?
So easements are usually permanent, especially a conservation easement. But there is the SFIA, the Sustainable Forest Incentive Act. And those can be anywhere from five years to fifty years. So that's a forest stewardship plan that's written either by a private plan writer, a DNR staff person, or now Brandon in our office is certified to write them too. So that plan gets written and then registered with DNR. And then that land is protected and managed in a forest state with consideration to habitat and water quality and improving the forest. For the period of years in the agreement, and the landowner gets a small payment from the state each year that they're in that. Usually that payment ends up being about what the landowner pays in their taxes. They still pay their taxes, but then the state has this incentive for them. So that's SFIA, Sustainable Forest Incentive Act.
Of course, that's, that's one side of the equation. That's the, the protection side of the equation and the environmental side of the equation. But we also have to consider the development side of the equation and the tax capacity side of the equation. If these lands in our county keep getting used for these things and keeps growing over multiple decades, it can erode the tax capacity. Not that, not that these things aren't good things, because they, they are in many cases for the protection aspect. But it's, it's, there's two sides of the equation that I always have to be looked at here.
And I agree. And in our, especially in our local forestry team that we're working on, we are always looking at how conservation and local economics fit together and try to support programs and smart development and choices where, where you do maintain that local economic structure, both for the tax purposes and for families, businesses. We are thinking about all of those things within our teams and our prioritization process takes that into account. We don't want to protect the lands that are the lands that would be ideal for development to happen on. We want to protect the lands that protect the water quality of those people's wells, you know? So we have Mitch Brinkes and we did have Pete Jacobson help quite a bit on understanding how to use the prioritization of what lands are most beneficial to protect for water quality purposes and what lands are the ones that really should be used for development or agriculture. We don't want to take those things away. We just want to think about how we're doing it and provide people with support, so.
And I'm certainly supportive of that. I just, you know, we're dealing with as a board, large entities coming in and buying large acreage in the county. That of course they have perfect right to do. It's a free market. And then those things get turned over to entities where the tax revenue is lost. Well, if you have that go on too much, pretty soon you're not left with a lot. I mean, it might take fifty years, a hundred years to get there, but it's an incremental step. And, and some of those properties that have been identified and purchased by, you could argue are good for both. So that's, that's the struggle we worry about. And I, I get the One Watershed One plans. Most of that is, you know, close in around the watersheds, trying to protect and create buffer areas.
Exactly.
And a lot of it is undevelopable in the first place, so it makes sense. But there, there's, I just want to be clear, there's two sides to the equation. We, we're talking about the protection side here for the most part.
And there are opportunities to improve existing dwellings that maybe become aged, put in plays back in the forties and fifties. And as they increase that dwelling property, your tax base goes up there as well. There's, understand it takes some balance. I agree.
And this is of course voluntary to the landowners.
Right.
Right. And, I mean, just to, so you guys know, and I think, I know most of you a little bit, I am always thinking about what the community needs and wants. And so my job is, is specifically to protect the soil and water. But what I care most about is what is needed in the community, what the people need, what the people want. And, you know, I want to always be open to conversations with you guys about what you see people need and want and what your concerns are. And think about that while we're doing our work too.
And I, I agree with that. My concerns are not with, with the entities locally. My concerns are with the large nonprofit entities that come in and buy a large swath of land and then it's, it's gone.
And I think the more that we talk with each other and we understand what we want to do together. And that's why when we're thinking about our local water plan and what we want to do with that in the future, we should meet again sometime this year. And in the last meeting I was here, we talked about shortening it and creating a five to eight-page document that's the lens through which we see these One Watershed One plans. If we meet and keep that up to date and understand each other and work together, we have a lot more choice and power together to do what's right for our community. And I, I think, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to talk about this, have access to the programs and funds, and also think about what does Hubbard County need.
And the next one coming up, the crowing one, there are some big needs for the county when that one.
Chris could speak to where we're at on that one at this time as well.
So we've met a few times to make sure that the SWCDs are still in favor of moving forward to request planning funds this year. And we are. So we expect Bowser to open up that application period in March and it will probably go through sometime in June. So the plan right now is to get together and use our collective experience from other One Watershed One plans to put together that proposal and submit it for this round, which would mean that planning could start next winter.
Any other questions?
Great questions, Dave. But I don't, I don't foresee, and we're kind of the gatekeeper, of what's coming in as far as large properties being sold. I don't, I mean, I think it's a great vetting, but I don't think we got to worry about that right now with this present board.
Well, no, but we just had it happen.
Well, there is a.
Ten thousand acres.
Are you guys talking about the Conservation Fund lands? Yeah. I know that their intent is to work with the local groups, including the county land management and DNR, to place those lands with, with those groups as we want them, so as you value them. So that's an opportunity to, Potlatch didn't own junk land. They owned land that was good for growing trees. So that might be an opportunity to increase production for, for tree harvests. And I, you know, it also, if you're thinking about, as this time period that they're working on figuring out where to place those lands goes on, I know that there's carbon sequestration programs developing that may in the future be able to pay the owners of the land and the, if the owner's the county, pay the owner of the land some money while you're letting it grow for that carbon sequestration that's happening. And then you can still have a timber harvest. And in these discussions going on for developing the programs, one of the things they're looking at is wanting to continue to have harvestable products that support local economy while sequestering the carbon. And the carbon is in the dry material of the wood. So if you are growing trees that turn into long-lived products, you know, cabinets or window frames or houses, I guess, anything in a house, that's a product that is going to continue to hold the carbon even after it's harvested. So the people who are working on developing some of those programs for people in Minnesota are looking at what is our forestry industry, what is our need, what can we do? And how do we sequester carbon, have payments for that while also supporting the forest industry? So that that continues in Minnesota. It's a big part of where a lot of people get their income and have historically. So that's an important part of the conversation. And beyond that, I know that the Conservation Fund plans to work on selling those lands to private individuals after they have made sure that the county and the DNR and everyone has acquired the parcels that they have interest in. So I think that it's a good idea to keep track of what they're doing and have concerns about it and ask those questions. I do think that, I do think their intent is to get the county what they want, get the DNR what they want, and then find private landowners who want to manage the other parcels, so.
And I know, I know there is private landowners that were in, in talks with Potlatch, looking to buy some of their parcels before they sold it all to the Conservation Fund. So I can think of one, a couple in particular, a seventeen-acre parcel and a forty-acre parcel, that I'm surprised Potlatch had them because they're, they're islands in themselves, not connected to any state or county lands or anything like that. To me, those would be ideal places for private ownership. But I know the Conservation Fund's talking about a ten-year time period. So hopefully, I'm hoping that there's a good percentage of the ten thousand acres that does go back from the public ownership. But time will tell.
Yes, I agree. I have had many people call to ask me if I know if they can get on a list to purchase land they're interested in, so. Yeah.
So we'll bring this forward to next meeting?
And you'll be here, Mr. Marcel?
If you need us here, I can be here.
Are you retired?
Pardon me?
Are you retired?
Yes.
Do you want this on the consent agenda or do you want this on the standard?
Okay, we'll see.
Okay.
Well, we could put it on the consent agenda and then if anybody wants to bring it forward.
We could. It's, it's difficult to invite speakers to be here if it's, if we're intending to put it on the consent agenda. So I, I think, I think maybe it's a, it's a, I would recommend leaving it on the regular agenda and, and giving it a few minutes to make sure that whoever's here and that Tom has an opportunity to ask questions.
I can comment. If there's questions, I can respond.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Very much. Have a great day. It was good to see you guys.
It's like it's going to be a beauty out there. Okay, now we're on to the county logo artwork.
So I think I mentioned that we had had the, the design firm that did the original county artwork contacted them about the capacity for looking at a simplified logo. And, and eventually when we would identify new graphics, that they would help us develop some graphic identity standards, which are important in, in creating a brand. The original logo, this is a seven-color logo. And it has the amount of detail that really kind of requires all seven colors to make it distinct and differentiate it. And you'll see the first thing they did on page one was to simplify, essentially simplify the design of the, of the loon to allow them to simplify the logo.
It looks ridiculous without the dots.
We, we like the, or excuse me, I like the original. The original logo, much more attention to detail, trees defined more, looks really nice.
And I, so you brought this.
Significant reproduction costs.
Yeah, you brought forth this because it was, it was cumbersome to use, correct?
Yes. It's cumbersome to use and expensive to reproduce.
So I mean, if a person.
That doesn't mean that you don't use the original artwork where it makes sense, where it doesn't cost anything. It just simply means that if you were in situations where.
I, I am a little baffled at, you know, just looking at the five-color one, because white is already in there. How come you can't have those little dots?
Because it's not just the dots, it's the dots.
Because when you, when you go down to a three-color logo?
I'm not interested in a three-color logo. I was thinking five would be about as far down as I wanted to go. So, so because we're already using white there, why can't we just add those dots back in on the loon?
Because if you, if you go down to two or three-color logo and you add those dots in there, they get lost. They won't reproduce.
Yeah, I was talking about the five.
I understand. And I'm talking about the two or three as far as experience and cost-effectiveness.
I'm not interested in the two or three.
Again, like the original. That's a nice one.
Okay. It's going to be very difficult and expensive for us to put together graphic identity standards based off of the seven. But if that's what the board wants to do, then that's what we'll do.
I mean, it's much clearer. It looks bright. It looks like we're a county that's progressive.
It doesn't.
So what is it? What are you talking about dollar-wise?
You cannot see the white marks when you use it here. They get lost. When you use them in this.
I can read the fine print.
I, I understand. That's exactly the point. You lose the identity of this because that logo that requires to be about three by three to have that level of detail, anytime you use it smaller than that, you lose it.
So from a standpoint of reproducing it, what works best?
That's, that's basically what, you know, I've actually had commissioner, department heads that say, drop the whole thing and start over and come up with something that says Hubbard County. And that makes, that's, that's a possibility too. There's just significantly more cost in doing that. I'll tell you, to this point, I spent $400 to allow them to spend some design time and do this. This was not a significant thing because they hadn't done the work for us before.
For me, I like simple.
The three-color or the two-color?
I can certainly go back and ask her to, to come up with an idea relative to, to graphic identity standards. But there, when you look on the last page, there are times where, you know, a hedged comment that they don't use any logo on the county vehicles and they don't intend to use any logo because of the expense. And then I, I look at if we incorporate the section on the third page of just a nameplate in one color and put that on there, at least that, that there's no additional, real no additional expense for logoing our vehicles. And they still blend in with the overall brand of the, of the county. I, I, it's, it's really, it's really kind of a hard thing to get to because the sheriff's office isn't going to drop their, their badge and they're, we don't want them to. But there are things that we want to do relative to branding and, and instilling pride in the workplace. If we want to put, we can't put that logo on a decal on a shirt.
Why can't you do both? Why can't you have this logo and then?
We absolutely can't. I'm not saying we would throw out the seven-color artwork piece. We would use it wherever it makes sense. We would just have to identify something else to use in the places where it doesn't scale well and it doesn't reproduce well. So that, we're not throwing out the seven-color. We're just trying to identify how we would simplify it in those situations where a simplified version is necessary. So for the purpose of clarity.
So you might have three or four versions of a logo.
Yeah, okay.
Depending on where you need to use it, that you'd grab. I mean, when I'm talking about versions, I mean simplified versions of the original.
Yep. That's entirely different then. I thought we were just totally changing our logo.
No, we're not, we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. But even when we look at, even when we look at, at this iCompass website and we look at website design relative to, for the county's purpose. If I go back.
You know, the only place that we put any identification on vehicles is Public Works, really. So, and that's pretty plain or simplified.
Nope, I get that. But when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at an online, when I'm looking at an online situation like this, we want to create a combination of colors that blend with the logo and add to the logo so that the identity, when people see, when I put out that, that tax mailer this past fall, I grabbed, I grabbed a color set that kind of closely approximated that. But we didn't have an identity standard that tells us what that color set is. And people are not uniformly using those. You can't use a color set in, in a PowerPoint presentation that includes seven colors. It gets complicated and it gets lost. So we may still use, you know, we still use this logo when we put that piece out. But we put it out over a two or three-color palette, simplified color palette, so that it blends and it makes sense and it fits. So the development of graphic identity standards doesn't mean throwing out the art. It means creating a combination. It means identifying typefaces and font size to be used with each different level. It, it creates artwork that's scalable so that you don't distort it or, or, or spread it out. So from, from that stand. So from, from that standpoint, I don't know that I like these social media buttons. Maybe they make sense, maybe they do. I don't know that we need them yet. I think that a two, a two or three color, that I think, I think everybody just really had a bad reaction to this blue, this four-color one with the blue in it.
The, the two-color one needs some sort of definition about where the loon is sitting on top of the water.
What, it's a frozen lake.
It's a frozen lake. That's, that's Gilligan.
There was just an article in the paper how everybody was rooting for that loon to leave before it got froze in.
That's good.
I, yeah, that's, I, so I guess my question really is, would we like to see the graphic identity standards that come along with this, because I think it's going to be a matter of a few more hundred dollars to have them do that, and then it'll place these in context. I would probably represent that a four-color or a three-color with green is probably the simplest thing to develop into that set, and we'd still identify that we would use the original artwork whenever we could, but we might put that original artwork over a simplified color palette, not seven colors. When you, when you put together a template for a Word document or for a PowerPoint presentation, that's when, that's when you get to the point that you want to simplify, and you don't want to try to work all seven colors, and, and those seven don't really work well together when you put them someplace else. And the way they're defined is awful because it doesn't correlate and pair with the way that Microsoft defines color palettes. It's a different, it's a different color definition. It's like, I don't know, it's like going to the hardware store and saying, use this, use these colors, and they say that, that's not the system we use, the Pantone versus the whatever changes, so. The intention is not to change that identity unless there was a significant desire to start, throw it out, start over, and I, I have not heard that. I've heard the question asked a couple of times, and shouldn't we start with something new? But most people are fine working off of the basis of what we have and then identifying different ways we would use that.
Does anybody know how long we've had this logo?
Twenty fourteen or fifteen, I think it was.
Sixteen? Well, fifteen, sixteen is when we did revise. I'm sorry to just bug in, but.
Yep. The invoice was paid in fourteen or fifteen.
Yeah. You spent a lot of energy.
Yep.
And we'd, it's been a lot more.
I'm not going to change that. I don't think there's any reason to. So as kind of an update, why don't we just let them see what the graphic identity standards comes up with, come up with the typeface and the fonts and the color schemes that would go with it and show how we would use, propose to use different things in different places? And I will share with them that you'd like to see the, the full logo used wherever it scales appropriately. Does that make sense?
Total sense.
Yes, but still, if they're going to go with a two-color, they have to somehow define where the loon and the water just kind of looks.
Maybe some waves.
Yeah, maybe a line with a wave, yeah.
Might work.
In black.
Well, we certainly want the water to be blue, not green.
Or black. Or black. Definitely.
Really? What's your complaint?
I'm saying. We work hard to keep it blue.
That's right. You mean like under the four colors?
Important point from the last conversation. Okay, well, we'll just have them, have them take the next step and see what they come up with, but I'll, I'll share those, that information.
That's a lot of energy. Thank you.
The only other item I have that just came up recently, and it's got, and it's time-bound, and I don't think there's going to be an issue with it, is, is that Alicia from Heartland Lakes is asking for a letter of support relative to their application on the, for the Good Jobs Challenge. So, and they need that by tomorrow, so I'll share a copy of that with you when I send it out, but basically, I think that the county has participated in those conversations, means that we're intent on supporting their application for that, so I'll just, I'll send them a letter.
Potential's up to a million dollars.
For jobs training.
Jobs training to work with, and Mahabe and DAC and, yeah.
It doesn't cost anything, but their time to write the grant at this point, but to turn that in, they need letters from, from employers who would, who would support it, so.
So is there anything else, then?
Is this just for information?
Yeah, I'm looking at this and.
So I'd like to make a comment. The reason our rates are going up is to, to pay for the alternative energy that doesn't work well here in the winter. Just saying.
What they have, is it five more sites down in the cities to plug in your vehicles?
I don't know. I'm talking about solar and wind, and I'm not against them, but, but they don't work well in Minnesota currently. Right now, we're using the electric grid to keep the batteries warm on the wind turbines that are not producing any electricity.
Burn that coal?
We don't have any, the coal levels currently are at an emergency rate. The potential of a blackout is real. I'm not trying to be a Debbie Dohner, I'm just saying.
It's a lot of money if you're a commercial.
Yep.
And it's going to affect every household.
I wonder what Attasca would be, what's it rating?
So no, that was just passed out because it came in and we were asked to share it with you.
Thank you.
So if there's nothing further, do we need a motion to adjourn, or I guess we're adjourned?
I guess we're adjourned.
We're adjourned.